This meeting to order, and the first thing on the agenda is any comments from the public not listed on our agenda. Please step forward.
I did it last Wednesday, so I'm doing it again. It's not an enchanting item, it's an announcement on Philistalk and Philhar.
Excuse me, Kathy, you need to identify.
They don't know me by now. Kathy Holton, 1972 and South Central Point Road. And I'm affiliated with Philistalk and Philhar that we fill the stockings at Christmas time for those that need it. And we're having our fundraiser, All You Can Eat Chili and Cornbread, Saturday, April 21st, from four to seven. And we have a huge raffle, so come on out, and it's after the cleanup.
And where is it?
Pioneer Community Center.
Thank you for that public service announcement. So we will have approval of the minutes on February 26, 2001. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or comments about those minutes?
Just a couple on mine.
Okay.
On page five. The first sentence states chairperson name. And the second sentence under my name, she states that applicant should provide a construction plan and maintenance schedule that adheres to the neighbor's request. I think there's a lot more that was going on there than what was paraphrased here, and I'd like that sentence scratched, deleted, because I believe it would take up way too much time to figure out who said what and what exactly was said, but this did not come out the way I thought I had said it.
Which section was that?
Still on page five in the middle after Commissioner Sarat.
Could I?
Second sentence in her paragraph there.
Could I ask for? Would I, that was a, that was a significant conversation that we spent a great deal of time, so I would recommend if we can reword the sentence so that it feels more, generally speaking, what you said.
I think that there were several people involved in that conversation, and I don't know if we can reword just what I said. I think that whole, that whole conversation would, if you leave the sentence in there, would need to be revisited. It was so, it was long enough ago that I can't recall exactly what happened there, other than the fact that I had asked whether, whether the applicant thought. I had asked either the applicant or the city staff whether it was appropriate for the applicant to do maintenance on neighbors' requests, and it was later stated that it's not appropriate, and, but this is not the sentence, I don't know, it just doesn't.
How, if, would this be satisfactory if we deleted that sentence and said something like the discussion concerned maintenance plans and schedules?
Was this me making the sentence, this is my major question, or is this me making the statement?
No, no, no.
No, it would be.
It would start out, the discussion, the discussion concerned maintenance plans and schedules.
I would be okay with that.
That way, that way would, there would be a link to the tape with all the specifics, and that would be a little better, I think. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other changes?
Minor, no big deal change, but my name is spelled with an E, R G at the end, not a U, R G.
Is that all the way through?
M E M G E L B E R G.
All the way through?
Okay, do we have any more changes from the commissioners on the minutes for February 26? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt, the minutes as corrected, noted by the staff and by Commissioner Engelberg.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, can we poll the commission, please?
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Maine?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingelberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarat?
Aye.
And Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
Okay, we also need to do an approval of the minutes from our meeting on March 12, 2001. Do any commissioners have changes to be made on those minutes?
None.
Look good to me.
Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February 12, 2001.
March 12.
One, March 12. March, yeah, March 12, 2001.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, can we poll the commission, please?
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Maine?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingelberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarat?
Aye.
Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
Okay, this evening we have no public hearings on our schedule, so we will be going into sort of a work session mode, and we will be reviewing old business and new business. And with regard to our old business, we have a review and action on planning commission code of conduct. So what comments do we have this evening on our code of conduct?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If possible, I would like to read these aloud so that those watching on videotape can know what we're talking about.
Okay, are we on video this evening, or are we just doing a tape?
Just tape. Okay, either way.
Okay, sure.
Because I, I happen to, I couldn't find any problem with it, I thought it was, it's really a good thing to do, I like the language, I like the intent. It seemed comprehensive, it seemed fair, and speaks to the issues that I'm concerned with, and if, just for the record, I'd like to read them if I may.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
This is a proposed Oregon City Planning Commission Code of Conduct. To promote effective governance, we commit to, and then there are a number of items here. Work for the common good of the city within the city commission framework. Give respect and dignity to all planning commission members, staff, and citizens regardless of personal opinion or bias. Bestow praise in the public arena and encourage vigorous and respectful public debate. Focus on the present and future with no blame fixing for things in the past. Discuss concerns with other, with another planning commissioner in a professional and timely manner individually, taking care to share all concerns. Give advance notice to fellow commission members, staff, and citizens for matters being introduced before the commission, thereby allowing time to review all material and/or data. Take no action on the city's behalf without following proper procedures and the directives of the city's comprehensive plan and implementing ordinances. And last, support majority decisions of the commission and avoid personalizing disagreement or eroding the collective reputation of the commission. And that's followed by the statement that we believe that daily decisions and actions must incorporate individual accountability and ethical character qualities. These are honesty, personal integrity, dedication, courage, and compassion. Above all else, we pledge to give continuous dignity and respect to all people in all circumstances with regard to the governing of our city.
That's very nice, very nicely done.
Well, it's a nice, it's a nice statement.
Do we have tears?
Almost, almost.
And if, just unless there's further discussion, which I hope there is, but I would move that we adopt this statement as it's written. I'll put that on the floor for discussion.
I think it's one of those things where you could just keep talking and talking and working on it and changing it, and, and I think over time we probably should revisit it often and change it, it should be a kind of a living, breathing document, I think. But I think it looks real good, what we have right now, I think it looks real good.
I have two words that I think could be made more clear. The first sentence is, to promote effective governance, we commit, we as a planning commission don't govern, we recommend to the city council that governs. So I'm not sure it's the right word. Maybe it's to promote long-range community planning, or implement quality comprehensive planning, or whatever it is, but I don't know, just doesn't seem like the right word. And the second word that is not clear to me is blame fixing. I'm not sure.
Where is that word?
What that means. Focus on the present and the future with no blame fixing for things in the past. I don't know if it could be reworded to say focus on the present and the future, period. Don't look to the pa, don't refer to past actions.
Past actions. Yeah, I was playing with rewording that also.
Okay, so let's discuss governance first, to promote effective governance, I mean, that's sort of exactly what the planning commission does, is we're promoting, we don't do the governance, but we are promoting the governance because we're trying to help the city commission have a tool for effective governance, so it still sort of remains the same in that regard to me. But I'm open to another usage there.
Madam Chair, if I may, governance is a word that I've come to use a lot lately in the particular kind of work I do in which we're looking at a system in which there's a number of elements to the governing of an entity, whether it's a state or a city government, there's lots of parts of that. And a planning commission really is a part of a governance structure as laws and regulations. We may not implement, but we are an integral part of what political scientists would call a governance structure. It's a little obscure, no question about it, but I think it is an accurate word in this context.
And this code of conduct is about governing ourselves, ultimately, that's what it's about.
Would you feel comfortable if you said something like to promote an effective structure for governance, we commit to?
Sure, that'd be fine.
And that's given Commissioner Bailey's comments and Chairperson Carter's comments about being part of the structure and needing that thing there, but does that, that clears it up for you?
Right, and I was primarily concerned about how the city council might react to that word, they may feel that, oh, we do that. It's not the planning commission's role to do that.
Okay, so that, that might be a way of it.
Okay, so to promote effective structure in governance or of governance?
I thought you promote an effective structure for governance.
For?
We commit to, for governance, we commit to.
Okay.
So you're part of the structure.
Alrighty. And then with regard to the sentence with the blame fixing, you know, ideally, nobody would live in the past, but it's something that as human beings, we have a tendency to do, and this is trying to address that that issue of, of, you know, past tense, and if there's a better way to say that, I'm certainly open to saying it another way, as long as we don't lose the intent there.
Can you just simply say focus on the present and the future in making wise planning decisions or planning recommendations? And have that be an affirmative rather than that, end it with a negative?
Well, it's.
I have no problems with it being affirmative rather than a negative, we should do that as much as possible.
I think so also. This is looking, looking at now and looking into the future instead of looking into the past.
Because the way it's stated makes you want to look in the past.
And say, what, what happened?
What happened?
What happened, what did they do?
Why is this an issue? Yeah, if we didn't have any problems, nobody would have thought of putting that in there.
Right. Right, but the fact that it is, is, I'm not sure, in my mind, just saying focus on the present and the future is going to be a strong enough statement to make people say, okay, I'm really focusing on the present and the future, and I'm not going to allow, you know, past experiences, whether they be negative or positive, to interfere with my present decision-making.
Would it help if you started out that sentence by saying learn from the past, comma, and focus on the present and the future for making wise planning decisions?
Yes.
I would, I would support that, because I, I think it is wise to, I mean, you have to, you have to build on what came before. Whether, good and bad, learn from it, so I would support that.
I marvel at the way your mind works, Maggie.
Okay, so what are we, what are we doing now?
If this sounds correctly, correct, I think it would work for you, learn, we commit to learn from the past, comma, and focus on the present and future in making wise planning decisions. And I like the idea of keeping, of putting whys in there, that, that even assumes, you know, some great actions, you know, so that, that sort of ties it together like it's a wisdom deal here.
Okay, have you got that one down in its entirety then? Okay, would you read it just one more time for me?
We will, learn from the past, comma, and focus on the present and future in making wise planning decisions, cynical.
Okay, is everyone happy with that? Oh, okay, is that allowed, did someone from the audience want to make a comment in a work session? Oh, you don't?
She did what I rather said.
Oh, okay.
We think alike.
It will be, it will be really up to you to decide if you want any public comment at all during your work sessions, for this one, I would say no, this is your, your thing.
Alrighty, well, since we got that handled.
Right.
Alrighty, so then do we, are we ready for a motion? Another comment?
Another comment, just, just add a word at the very, very last sentence with regard to governing of our city, can we just put Oregon City? Is that? It's our city, but it's also Oregon City. Doesn't make that much of a difference.
Unless it changes its name later on.
I kind of like the idea of our, because it gives us ownership of our city, it's our city, if you take, if you just put Oregon City, it takes away from being as personal, I think.
Yeah, it kind of personalizes it a little bit.
Our city of Oregon City.
Our fair city.
Your decision, your call.
Okay, well, do we have a consensus one way or the other?
It, it makes no, I mean, I have no feeling for either way, I, I like it the way it is, but I think Oregon City fits.
Our Oregon City.
Our city of Oregon City. Because it's the city of Oregon City.
Okay, why don't we do that, our city of Oregon City? So now I believe we're ready for a motion?
I'll move that.
Excuse me, there is a motion, or a.
I actually made a motion earlier.
You made a motion, there was no second.
Oh, okay.
But as, in addition to his motion, as amended?
Well, technically, there's, there needs to be a second for there to have been discussion, there was not a second, so we're discussing. Now, in, in the absence of a second, we have discussed, somebody needs to remove the entire question. So.
As Commissioner Bailey earlier motioned with, moved with amendments per our discussion, I so move.
Now.
Second.
So we have. A motion and a second, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Maine?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingelberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarat?
Aye.
Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
And I would like to personally thank Ms. Collins for her fine piece of work on helping us achieve a code of conduct for the Oregon City Planning Commission, this is very, very good.
Thank you very much, each of you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so now that we have done that very big piece of business, we are ready to go on to new business. And I believe that our staff person, Brian Cosgrove, our community development director, is that his appropriate title?
This is the city manager, I'm starting him out with opening the keys.
Okay.
Yes, we have four, for the viewing audience, we have four work sessions on different topics that are scheduled this evening. The first one is on Oregon City urban renewal districts and how they work. The second one will be on tax increment financing principles. The third one is on the Oregon City Civic Improvements Fund, and the fourth one is on metro, the metro enhancement fund for the city. The point of these work sessions is to kind of give the planning commission an overview of those special mechanisms the city has for, for working with development issues. And I believe that Nancy Krasch, or the city engineer, will begin with the questions on the Oregon City Urban Renewal Districts and how they work, is that correct?
That's right, it's a pleasure. Let's see, uh, quickly. Let's pass this round first, let me keep one thing myself, so I can. Well, I have been, since I've been in the city for almost five years now, I was originally hired to do urban renewal project management, so it's been a pleasure to see this urban renewal agency kind of mature in the last five years, and I think we've done some great projects in the city, and we hope to continue to do so. I thought I'd start out quickly with kind of a little primer on urban renewal, and the handout I just gave you is something we've used in the past, so it's not real, you know, I didn't just make it up today, but it's a real useful tool in describing what urban renewal is all about. First of all, in the early, in the 1950s and 60s, the state actually established the laws under which urban renewal functions, and so everything we do is by statute and by ordinance through the city, local government. And the idea of what is urban renewal supposed to do in many communities, particularly, well, for Oregon City, I think it was in the 1980s, we were faced with some areas of the city that were deteriorating, they were faced with hopefully some redevelopment that wasn't, just wasn't happening. And so the city recognized that, and what urban renewal does is it provides funding to then spend on projects within certain areas that kind of moves things along, triggers redevelopment, and hopefully triggers a stronger tax base in the long run for the entire community. So there's a couple of things, though, the city must do to be legal with urban renewal, and the very first thing you need to do is have an urban renewal plan. Now, we have two districts in Oregon City, we have a district in the downtown area, and I'll show you on the maps in a little bit, and then we also have a second district in the Hilltop area. The city started out with one urban renewal plan, and then they amended that to separate the two districts and redefine the boundaries, and that's what we have today. We've also done several amendments to the plans throughout the years, you just have to update them and make sure you're still talking about the same projects and things change, and, but.
Excuse me, Ms. Krasch, can I just have a question, now, when the urban renewal district was all one, did, that was the whole entire city, including Mall Avenue?
I think, actually, I think it started out as both Hilltop and Downtown, and then they recognized the need to separate them out, it never extended all the way in between, it just included both areas.
Okay.
And it's, it's helpful to have the money kind of separated into separate pots. So one of the requirements of state law is to have a plan, and in the plan, you need to establish boundaries, and they're very strict. I mean, what, the money that's collected within those boundaries has to be spent within those boundaries also. So I was mentioning that we have a downtown plan, now this covers a very large area, and goes all the way from South End Road, clear down here, a very, very skinny little portion along South End Road, covering the bluff area, the, there's the promenade area down there, and then it extends up Seventh Avenue to about Division Street, I think it's actually John, Harrison. And then it covers the Washington Street Downtown area, goes into the Clackamas Cove area, Clackawick Cove area, mistake, the Price Cities Treatment Area, and actually continues across 213, here's Highway 213, and here's I-205. Captures just a smidgen of Park Place, and then it comes down, and this is at the bottom of the bluff, and goes down here past the Redland Road interchange, and then comes back around, again, this is probably on top of the bluff, above the old county shops here. So it covers some of the McLaughlin District, it covers the Seventh Street Corridor, covers all the downtown community plan area, as well as the Evernathy Green area, which, realizing that most of this area is exactly the same as what's defined as the downtown community plan area, which is also designated as a regional center by Metro. So those are the boundaries for the downtown urban renewal district. Uh, excuse me, Ms. Krasch, on the southernmost end by the river, does it exclude the mill, is up a bit? Actually, it does, yes, this is the mill right here. Okay, so it goes up to the mill property? Right, it covers 99. McLaughlin. McLaughlin, however. Now, the Hilltop area is sort of an odd-shaped, irregularly shaped district. It covers all of the land that the county has offices in up here, here's Wardham only road, and here's Molalla Avenue, and here's Highway 213 to get your bearings here. So it covers where the county is, where the red soils, Camps Industrial Park is, and we'll talk about that in a, in a minute, that's the one of our projects. It covers City Hall, covers the south side of Beaver Creek Road, it covers the property that's currently, the
Dale's wrecking yard, and the Jacoby property which is vacant, and then it, it kind of borders the south side of Beaver Creek Road, continues all the way down Beaver Creek Road, crosses Highway 213, includes Berryhill Shopping Center.
So I think what was initially envisioned by this district, even though I wasn't here when it was actually created, was that they saw some opportunities in a lot of the area that was owned by the county, off the tax rolls completely. And then certainly some opportunity in terms of redevelopment along Beaver Creek Road after the 213 was built, because basically this is the entryway to the Hilltop from the Hilltop, and it's, needs a little work. Because basically, this is the entryway to the Hilltop from the Hilltop, and it's, needs a little work.
When was the urban renewal district first formed?
The very first one was formed, I believe, in the early eighties. And then it was amended in the nineties to split them apart, early nineties.
How were the boundaries determined? What, what, what types of things do the, were looked at?
I imagine they looked for what made sense in terms of possible future property acquisition, what areas were clearly blighted. Um, the fact that they included all of Abernathy Green and all of Clackamet Cove and all of downtown, there must have been some visioning where they saw some opportunities for redevelopment, saw some areas that hadn't moved in terms of economic redevelopment for years. And, um, but, I wasn't here at the time, but those are the kinds of thought processes, I imagine. And, the other thing I would imagine you'd think about is where you would, where your plans envisioned new projects and infrastructure. You'd want to make sure that those, those infrastructure improvements were included in the boundaries. Um, then the next thing that you need to have, as I mentioned, was, um, goal, in the plan, in these, in these bound plans, you need to have goals and objectives. You need to clearly state what your goals are for each district and the objectives. And, um, right now, I don't have a lot of extra copies of these. Um, we did an update, which some of you reviewed the update for the urban renewal plans when we kind of updated the projects about a year ago. And, um, we're still working on getting a real document to copy and hand out to people. We need some administrative help, right? I won't remind you about that. But that's something that we will have for you soon, and we'll make sure it gets distributed. Um, if I, I can give you just bits and pieces, and it's only, only Sharon and I know how to read these at this point.
Can you, can you kind of summarize if there's any differences between the goals and objectives on the Hilltop Urban Renewal and the downtown?
Actually, they're quite similar. They both have to do with bringing in more tax dollars for the city. That's always the baseline, because that can make the city richer. And, um, also, it has to do with increasing tax values, identifying properties that perhaps could be acquired, that the city could redevelop. And that would be common in both downtown and Hilltop. For example, in downtown, the city purchased the Clackamet Cove area. It had been in bankruptcy for close to ten years, and it was going nowhere. And the city saw at least, at least let's get it into public hands, maybe we can start doing something right with it. And the same thing happened on the Hilltop when we purchased this. We actually did a purchase from the county on that. The county found that there was excess land they didn't need, and we saw it as an opportunity to develop the Campus Industrial Park in the Hilltop area. So we developed it just like any subdivision developer would develop a piece of land. We built the infrastr, the sewer, the water, we built the roads, we designed lots, and then we sold them off gradually. And there's some very nice looking job creating businesses in those, um, buildings right now. Then another idea is simply to, um, create infrastructure, improve highways, give facelifts. For example, Seventh Street Corridor, McLaughlin Boulevard, Beaver Creek Road, those are all areas that if they have a facelift, it'll, it'll rejuvenate the area and welcome economic redevelopment along those quarters. Those are goals common to both plans. I think both plans have very common goals and objectives. Just slightly different, um, looks. The downtown area, of course, is much older. The Hilltop area is newer, but it hasn't seen its full potential at all, so...
Okay, so my question with that, as, as a planning question, is, you know, Molalla Avenue is between these two areas. And Molalla Avenue has a lot of properties that are, are difficult properties, not enough parking, uh, you know, just a lot of constraints. And a lot of properties have been for sale for a, a number of years that haven't sold. So when you start seeing this type of thing going on in, in an area, would that begin to give you occasion to consider doing another district to, uh, work on those?
I think the, I think the opportunity does exist in Oregon City to create another district. Um, that would be something that certainly, if the planning commission wanted to move something like that forward or concept forward and discuss it with the city commission, and then actually the urban renewal agency, which is the city commission, sitting with different hats on, that decision would come from them ultimately. But I think there's a lot of opportunity along that corridor. Um, and then one of the other requirements of an urban renewal plan is to have a list of activities. Not that you're going to do them all. It's very, very flexible in terms of, you don't have to achieve every single activity. You won't be considered a failure, but you have to have some things in mind, so you don't start spending money willy-nilly. You can't just say, "Well, I've got an idea. I'm going to spend this on that bank down in downtown Oregon City." Well, that's not okay. You have to be at least conforming to the activities that are listed in the plans. And, um, what the activities in both districts, they're very similar. Again, they basically revolve around spending the money on infrastructure, which includes streets, sewer water, parks, pub, that kind of, um, acquiring park land, things that would change the face of the property, which in turn would hopefully increase values. So, um, roads, um, so with that, those are the, I, the requirements of a plan. And then, um, I thought what I'd talk about very quickly then is where does the money come, what is, what is urban renewal money? What is tax increment financing? And what happens in urban renewal is, in each of these districts where the boundaries are, when we finally adopted the plans, the ta, the tax assessor looked at the values of those properties and figured out how much money, how much taxes you could, um, tax on those properties. And then, as the tax, as the values of those properties slowly increase through time, through, hopefully, through some of the activities we've been doing in those areas. For example, in the Red Soils area, when the first couple of buildings started going up, there was an increase in the property values in that district. And the, the taxes gained from that increase in property value then goes to the urban renewal district to do more projects.
That's the increment. The difference between the frozen assessed valuation and then the current year assessed valuation, and it can fluctuate.
And that's the tax increment. It's, it's just this difference in property values, really. And they do tend to, they keep going up, hopefully, if your plans are working.
If you're making a difference.
The downtown plan took a while to get going. Actually, both plans took a while. They took five to ten years to start really seeing some good tax increment coming in to build new projects with. But I think we're at the point now where there's a lot of, um, a fair amount of tax dollars coming in where we can make a difference. And I think we've seen that in some of the projects we've, and I'll go over a couple of the projects we've done to date.
Excuse me, I have a question. So the tax rate inside the urban, or the, uh, urban renewal area is the same as the tax rate outside? It's just that how it's, that money is spent?
That's right.
It pulls that money out of the general pool?
And actually, with ballot measure fifty, it ends up being distributed across the entire Oregon City population. Everybody sees...
Everybody, you'll see it on your tax bills, roughly ninety cents per thousand.
Right.
But the, I guess the big difference is, um, if there were no urban renewal district, what would happen is all those taxes that we would collect would be distributed to all the various taxing agencies.
Yeah, okay.
And that doesn't happen in an urban renewal district. It comes directly to the city.
So it's a way of focusing that money?
Keep the dollars in the community.
Right.
Generally speaking, um, school districts and other folks that are taxing bodies don't terribly mine too much. Some of the public safety folks do if they're on their own special or a sep, separate levy, but, because it's to their advantage that we increase the value inside the city as well, so...
Right, because everybody's tax income will go up eventually. And actually, even when Oregon City did their bond measure, they actually accommodated the amount they knew. There was this tiny little bit that they knew would go into urban renewal, and they built their, their bond around that. So they're not losing any money or anything because of our urban renewal districts. Um, so that's briefly, and that kind of carries you through. I'm going, I figure you guys can take this home with you and read it, and we can always have a work session number two, or, um, you know, Brian and I are always available for questions, too. One thing I wanted to mention that was significant in my time here was ballot measure fifty. When that got passed by the voters, was that in ninety-eight?
It was measure forty-seven originally, a size more initiative than the legislature, as they always have to do. Fixes it and refers it back to the people.
Right, and actually, that, that...
Is that a non-political statement?
Didn't come out of my mouth. Actually, the, um, that's one thing that kind of stalled out our urban renewal projects for about eighteen months, was we didn't know what was going to happen. Measure forty-seven kind of had some problems, and then it wasn't going to actually go into effect, and we didn't know if we should spend any... It really froze all of, all of our activities. But then when ballot measure fifty passed, there was clear direction as to what the agencies needed to do to comply with that new law. And we did it, and now we're merrily rolling on our way. What measure fifty did was it established maximum indebtedness on each of our districts. And so what we did was we took our old urban renewal plans and established, looked at the, looked at the activities, and we figured out, okay, if we're going to get all these activities done in the next X number of years, it didn't say how long it needed to take, um, this is how much they're going to cost. And we went out, I think it was about fifteen or twenty years, and figured out how much those projects would be worth if we got them all done. And in the downtown area, which I, I gave mine to Laura here. Sorry, Laura, I didn't grab one of those. In the downtown area, we actually ended up identifying about twenty-four thousand dollars worth of, twenty-four million dollars worth of activities. Twenty-four thousand wouldn't go too far. And, um, so...
I was going to say, you need to be a little more ambitious.
That's right, that would be, I'm not very motivated. And then in the Hilltop area, we, um, determined that the projects were worth about ten, nine million dollars. And so you can see there, that there's always been a realization that there's a whole lot that we can, we can do downtown. And there's a fair amount we can do in the Hilltop, too, but the downtown has got a much longer project list. So, um, and what that says is, from that day forward, then, we've got twenty-four million dollars to spend downtown. We've got nine million dollars to spend in Hilltop. That doesn't factor in interest and, and that kind of thing. But, um, we've been, we haven't spent too much of that since we've done these plans, but, so that there, it's whittled down to probably about twenty-one million downtown and about six million, no, seven million in the Hilltop still that we can spend, if the commission so desires. Anytime the commission wants to, they can halt urban renewal. Um, they can take part, part of the tax coming in. They make choices during, um, budget season, whether or not they want to take all the tax in, or they want to take a portion of the tax. That, there are times they're, they're, um, they're thinking that they perhaps should take part of the tax, because then the taxpayers see a lower tax bill. Um, we always hope that they don't, because this little bit of money sure can make a difference in our community. And we've seen some really good projects come out of it.
The revenues come into the agency in two ways, through the division of taxes and what they call special levy. And the special levy is what the city commission can determine whether they want to go for all of it, a part of it, or, or none of it. That's the choice they make. But the division of tax revenue comes in every year regardless.
Regardless, and then the special levy, the commission can vote on taking a portion of it or all of it. And the thing that really, unless we got out of urban renewal altogether, the thing that really is going to control how much we ever spend in the districts is that maximum indebtedness. And Brian and I have looked at it in terms of it's, in a lot of ways, it's more efficient to spend your money sooner than later. Go ahead and collect it until you've reached that maximum indebtedness point. Because if we collect it in smaller increments, you stretch it out, you don't get the bu, the, um, value in your dollar ultimately to do the projects.
And one of the things that the agency could do, if it so chose, is to advance finance. So if they, if they designated five or six projects in downtown, and they wanted to say spend ten million dollars, they could get that money now and just pay for it through the division of taxes and special levy, if they so chose to. Which, it, it makes sense to look at it in that way, if you have projects lined up.
Right. And we can go out for, we couldn't do the whole amount in bondedness, because we don't get enough money in each year to pay it off and pay the debt, um, piece of the, piece of the bond. But I think Dave Wimmer has some, has done some calculations, is how much bonds, how many, how much, what's the value of bonds we could go ahead and, um, issue, and still be able to pay them back and balance of all, balance all of our... So then, I thought I, yes?
There, there seems, you would pay back your indebtedness through issuance of bonds?
Yeah, there's, there's two kinds of bonds, basically, that governments deal with, revenue bonds and geo, general obligation bonds. Revenue bonds are backed by a dedicated funding source. So if you wanted to go out for a super project, you could go out for a revenue bond, because you have a dedicated funding source, which is basically the ratepayers. If you want to go out for, say, park improvements or a new city hall for, you know, not, just to use this as an example, then that would be a general obligation bond, um, that would have to be voted on. Revenue bonds don't have to be voted on.
Okay, the thing that's confusing me, though, is if the money is coming in yearly, and you're not spending it, because you haven't decided on which projects or whatever, isn't that money just accumulating to the point where you wouldn't need a bond? You would have the money there to pay for that project?
Yeah, in Hilltop, we have a pretty good balance right now, although we're committed to the Beaver Creek two thirteen project. Where the city, the urban renewal agency is going to be contributing two and a half million dollars to that. So that'll take out a big chunk of the Hilltop, what we have saved. And we have been saving it because earmarked, because of obligations to that project. Downtown, we seem to spend it as it comes in. And if we wanted to do, say, a big project downtown, um, for example, if McLaughlin Boulevard ever got to the point where, um, we wanted to just maybe do one large phase of it, and say, say it was a six million dollar project, we get about, just average, about a million dollars in annually down, for the downtown urban renewal district. So in that case, you'd probably, you could consider doing a bond, and then, um, doing the big project, seeing the property values go up, and then as the taxes come in, pay it off.
Yeah, if I'm understanding clearly, then downtown, we have a twenty-four million limit that you could spend up to.
That's correct, yes.
So that if you wanted to, you could go in and do a project that was twenty-four million, and then you would just pay it back.
Then you're done. Exactly. That's exactly correct. So, um, what we have done so far, I mentioned in the Hilltop area, I think the Red Soils Campus Industrial Park is kind of our highlight. And of course, we're moving towards two thirteen Beaver Creek. We have the money in the bank to do that.
And this intersection over here?
That's right, Molalla and Beaver Creek, when that got realigned, that was funded with urban renewal money and a little bit of federal dollars. And then in the downtown area, we've, um, done, well, right now, we're working the Carnegie Center. And that has been a little slower to kick off, but we did those first three blocks of street, two, two blocks of streetscape. And we're spending, um, urban renewal money on the phase one of the Amtrak station. And, um, what else have we done? We've done some planning. We did, did a fair amount of the planning for the downtown community plan, came out of urban renewal. And, um, we have a lot of projects kind of on the horizon. Oh, we bought Clackamet Cove, and we're...
Bought the Stimson property, which, that's the land right across from the interpretive center.
Mm-hmm, right.
We bought the Cove for two point five million.
In the hopes of redeveloping these areas or turning them into things that end up being positive, um...
Okay, so it seems like everything that you would do with urban renewal is a very positive and forward-thinking and forward-moving type of plan. Why would there be any objection to having urban renewal? Or why would you have any objection to expanding it to improve your...
It's a, it's a political issue, and some, some people believe that you're taking money out of taxpayers' pockets that you wouldn't ordinarily have to. I mean, that's the bottom line issue with, with some people. Um, it makes, for me, as a citizen here, and also someone who works here, it sure makes it nice to have a alternative funding source. We would never have gotten the Beaver Creek money from the federal government.
Wait, there's no other street money, as you guys know that?
That's the only reason why we went to Metro and got that project, is because we had a, basically, a fifty percent match. And no local government can come up with that kind of money unless they have urban renewal.
Right.
And if you look at all the positive things that have happened in downtown Portland, ninety-eight percent of that's been done through tax increment financing. The moving of I five to create Atomic Hall Waterfront Park, anything good that happened in downtown Portland was a result of tax increment financing.
One other, just a planning project we did, um, with the downtown money was the Seventh Street Corridor Plan Two. And hopefully, one day, we'll be able to start implementing that plan. So, um, that's a bit of the history, and, um, in the future, what I've, what I envision, and actually, staff is trying to put together kind of a five-year plan, because for, um, since I've been here, it's always felt like it's a little bit... I like to have good firm plans that I'm working from.
She's an engineer.
And so, and so what we're working on now is a five-year plan, and nothing that you're married to. It's not something that couldn't change, but just to give us a little bit of guidance, so we can kind of plan the money thing and kind of figure out, does it, does it make sense to talk about doing any kind of bonding, or shall we just work with cash flow? I'm happy with working with cash flow in a lot of ways, because it saves, it can save some money. Um, but what we're looking at now in terms of the Hilltop is doing the two thirteen Beaver Creek intersection. And then what's always been in the plan as well is building out Beaver Creek between Molalla and two thirteen. And we built a teeny bit of that when we did the intersection, but it's kind of between, oh, about, about between Parker Paint and Berry Hill that needs to still be, um, widened out, sidewalks on both sides, nice pedestrian crossings. And that reminds me, part of the First Street extension was also funded with urban renewal dollars. Downtown area, what I see is... also funded with urban renewal dollars. Downtown area, what I see as being just great opportunity to, to have some funding for would be to implement the downtown community plan. There are a lot of transportation improvements downtown. And there's a lot of, a lot of the, bringing people back to the river stuff downtown, getting the promenade. And.
Building up the Cove would be a good one.
Right. Kind of finishing up that piece, helping the area develop in the Abernathy Green area in a more, hopefully more methodical way. And then the Seventh Street Corridor still has the potential for implementation. And there's just some great opportunities. And those are, and Washington Street, those are all, they're arterial streets, they're ones that the entire community really benefits from. You're not just focusing on a few little beneficiaries. And those kinds of improvements, I think, could really generate some increased property values. And everybody's kind of a winner. So that's where we're, that's where we're going with the plans at this point.
Mr. Vinnity, thinking about what is envisioned for Clackmont Cove?
Well, we're doing a master plan right now.
Which is funded through urban renewal.
Yeah.
And if you're, if you want to be a part, I'm sure you will be a part of that.
Yeah, you will be.
The planning commission, so you'll have lots of input. So that's good.
That's right. Yeah.
And on the Stimson Lumber site, what was the vision there?
Well, there wasn't one originally, but there certainly is now. That's where the Amtrak station would be started.
Right. There will still be a parcel north between the Amtrak station and the metro tran, transfer station that will probably go into redevelopment at some point. And at one point, that, that site was eyed for the Regional Visitor Center, too, but that, that moved around and now it's right at the end of the trail, interpretive center. But that's why we bought those properties.
What about the wrecking yard acquisition? That's a, something that's kind of on the planning horizon.
It's in the plan. If, if the momentum came from the leaders of the community, that that was something they wanted to do and they wanted to assemble that land and take, and do whatever it took to get it redeveloped and on the tax rolls and a different land use, that's very possible because it is in the plan.
Is it vacant right now?
Mm-hmm. Well, no, actually Dale's still using it.
It's in our.
Rocky, Rocky Younger is still using it, right. But there's a parcel next to it that's vacant.
You're saying that citizens would need to come forward on that? How would you expect them to do that? I don't think that would be common knowledge if they would have any clue they could have a say about that.
Say about the wrecking yard?
Or about the idea that the city could put.
Assemble the properties. That's the kind of thing where you could talk to staff about it and we could bring it to the agency in an urban renewal meeting. Really, that's how we communicate with the agencies in their meetings.
I think that's correct, that at this point, the thoughtful kind of master plans or sub-area planning that would have brought this site or, you know, more up Mo Lala Avenue and to everyone's attention with some ideas, that, that that would be where we're going now. But it has not happened up to this point. So you're absolutely right. No one would figure that there would be a chance to do anything on that site because they wouldn't know that there were, there was any money available to do a large-sized project. Would figure it would be there forever, as it were.
Okay. So how would you advertise the urban renewal meetings and their agenda or whatever to the public at large, so if they had an interest, they would be able to attend?
Well, we do advertise on Mo Lament Falls. I mean, all the standard kind of government ways of trying to reach out to people, recognizing that citizen involvement is a leisure time activity that, you know, there's a lot of compete, competing things that, you know, compete for people's time. So.
And the agency doesn't meet regularly, so it's not something we put in the newsletter as every, they kind of meet as needed. And part, part of that's because we don't, it's not a continuing, ongoing need.
Okay. But it would definitely be in, in the, you know, talk of the town or?
Yeah, we would do it.
Well, we don't, basically, we usually post them around town, just like we do at the city commission meeting.
But if it's a special project or something, we, we do try and put it in.
What type of projects would be considered for the, that property, the wrecking yard and, and the one?
It would require some type of plan to be put together, much like you do for, like working for the waterfront. You're talking about a pretty large area, so you would want to do some specific planning to see what needs are out there, what ideas people have in the community.
Marketing study.
So would it, the city would buy the property and then?
And just landbank it until some kind of plan was put together.
Would a private person come in and develop a structure of such?
Typically.
And buy the property from the city then?
And then it would just go right back into the agency's coffers. But typically, that's what urban renewal agencies are set up to do. Acquire land, assemble parcels, and get it ready for some type of development.
You know, how come Oregon City up on the hill doesn't have a hotel? I have been thinking about this and thinking about.
I have my check right here.
One thing I would recommend is that, you know, communication between the planning commission and city commission, you know, scheduling a work session just to talk about urban renewal.
Just, just a brainstorming session. It doesn't have to be anything where there's any big decisions. Just sort of, what are your ideas?
Well, they surely value your input.
This is very, this is very helpful to me, just in, in beginning that process. Because we just got through approving, as you would know, the Mo Lala Avenue Plan, which is primarily transportation-oriented, but it also thinks ahead to some sort of more intensive development of that corridor as a main street in Oregon City. And if, right now, that is, there's very little linkage between the hilltop urban renewal district and Mo Lala Avenue, although that one property is in fact the only one going right now.
That's right.
And going to somebody else's earlier comment about realigning or reconfiguring the boundaries to more coincide with Mo Lala, that may or may not happen. We may want to think about that. But right now, if you think about that property as a keystone piece that if it were configured in some way to support Mo Lala and Beaver Creek as a, as a major node in, in the area, which it is already, you can't tell it unless you, I mean.
Until you get here.
Till you get there. But it is.
It's a little town center up here. Right.
And a mapping, planning point of view, it's a central place. And we ought to think of its development potential in, in those terms and not just to, for any annual thing that comes along. It ought to serve some larger planning purposes than I think of.
I missed the first part of this discussion, so I don't know if it was brought up or not. But we can't add any more land to either, but either of the boundaries because we're tapped out on what the revised statute says we can add. But you could.
But you could do a new district. New district.
You could certainly create a new district, but.
The other question that maybe I didn't get an answer, or I didn't hear, was when do these districts expire?
After we've spent the maximum indebtedness.
Ah, so it could be twenty years from now?
Yes.
Or five years from now?
Five years, depending on when we build the projects, spend the money. Right.
In other words, you could keep doing a lot of small projects and never get to your maximum.
Right. That's the argument between should you advance finance or should you, I mean, could you lose money when you have to pay back the interest? So there's, you know, all kinds of schools of thought on it.
What's the mag, maximum amount of acreage for each district?
I don't think there's a maximum.
It's not based on acres.
Right.
But it is, once you form your district, you're limited to a certain number of acres that you can add.
It's a percentage, I think.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the total.
And I think when we did the major amendment that split them, that was like exhausted all of the possible re, reboundary, or redrawing the boundaries at all.
That's considered a major amendment. You have to go through a pretty significant process.
Right.
I'm glad we're talking about this tonight. As part of my regular job, I'm doing some work on brownfields. I got a grant coming out, I like my alliance, to hire a consultant to look at brownfields, determine how to clean up, pin them up, and all the cost estimate on that. And I see two potential brownfields. Here, the wrecking yard, sure we have something.
Something. We're not sure what.
And the Stimson, Stimson Lumber site came up on a DEQ list. So if the city's interested, at no cost to you, I can add you to the list.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That'd be great.
We'd never turn down free opportunities.
No, we don't.
And you might want to think about the landfill as another site.
Yeah.
To supervise.
It's a, it's a permitted landfill.
Isn't Stimson all but that little area?
Yeah. Stimson, the good news on Stimson is that we have the north, the big parcel to the, between the future Amtrak station and metro is, has a no further action on it. The little piece that we're actually developing for the Amtrak station, we have an agreement with Stimson that they're doing the cleanup on it. And we'll actually take ownership of that when we get the no further action from DEQ. That's part of our sales and purchase agreement. Now, up here, though, it's, you know.
We don't know.
Okay. So I need to get the tax lot numbers from you.
Okay.
Just a parenthesis on the Amtrak station, where is that in, in process?
It's being designed right now.
It's actually in planning. I think the, the hearing date is in May. Maggie?
It's.
For the conditional use permit. It's gonna be, it's a conditional use permit and site plan designer view. And I believe the conditional use permit is on your agenda in May.
That would be May fourteenth.
Is it gone to architectural design?
It's done.
Yeah, the design is completed in terms of site plan designer view.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's nice.
It is very nice.
No, it's really nice. We worked real hard on it. I mean, it's, it's not as.
We would never bring forward something to the planning commission that was stupid.
Right. Well, if staff wouldn't.
I'm not on purpose.
If we had three times as much money, it would be even better. But we, we're trying to get what we can with our little chunk of change.
And I think that with the Amtrak station, there's this idea of Phase One and.
Yeah, it's going to be Phase One, Phase Two.
So that the more intensive, I would say, pieces would be Phase Two and need to be designed extremely carefully. And hopefully, you would have private partnerships in the development of those pieces. So it'll be an interesting, it'll be an interesting review.
The urban renewal agency at some point met and said, okay, we're gonna set aside these dollars for an Amtrak station.
That's right.
And that was done through the annual budget process.
Right.
They go through the same process that the city commission goes.
Yes.
Ms. Kraushaar.
Yes.
When you get the set of projects or revisions, this seems to be a group that would be very appreciative of a copy of that.
Yes, and I will. And I, Sharon and I both just cringe every time we think of, why haven't we gotten that done yet? But it's a matter of time and resources. But I'm not gonna go through these necessarily with you, but one little handout here talks about how does the renewal agency receive its tax income funds. And it has a nice little summary of how we projected revenues for ninety-nine, two thousand budget. And then I've also, this last handout I'm putting, is our two thousand, two thousand and one budget report. And this report gives a little update on what we did the year before and what we're gonna do next year. And then it also gives a little financing discussion. And then it actually has the spreadsheets for the budget, too. So the urban renewal budget isn't nearly as cumbersome as the city budget, but it still has all the information required by law. So you can take that and, you know, do what you want with it. But we're, I mean, the killer is, we're right around the corner. We're gonna be doing another one of these. So we're getting geared up. So I, we do it every year.
What are the, the notice here on the downtown project is facade improvements, which might dovetail nicely with the new design standards.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. And we have little grants that we can, people can apply for. And there's some good opportunities downtown.
So is that program in place now?
Yes, it is. Mm-hmm.
If I called during normal working hours, I could find out when the next meeting is for urban renewal.
Yeah, actually, we don't have one scheduled, but I'm working on scheduling one because we have about three things we need to get action on.
Could we be on a mailing list for that or something?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just.
Okay. Here's a question.
We don't have anybody that does our mailing, of course.
We don't really have a mailing list or anyone to do it.
No, we have, it's, it's been very difficult because the staffing is so thin in urban renewal.
But we'll see that it happens.
We'll make sure that the planning commission gets notified on it.
There are some projects, just looking at the downtown projects here in the, in the borough.
In the brown?
On the brown. And some of them are clearly anticipate a, a public-private thing, you know, this facade improvement. And others are, appear to be more entirely sort of public improvement, the McLaughlin, Bloxton Promenade, or perhaps Eighth Street Dock. How did these get initiated? I mean.
A lot of those were created when the plan was created and it just kind of hung on.
They're just sitting there.
They just hung on for whatever reason. Some of them could be new that we've added at the request of either commissioners or someone from the, you know, the community. But they fluctuate over time and, and their standing as far as funding goes is not set in stone. So just because it's identified doesn't necessarily mean that it'll ever get done.
And these were, this list of projects was actually updated when we did our little amendment. And you'll see that the one, the amended activities are more transportation improvements and lists of streets and that kind of thing. So it's not quite as even specific as.
It just struck me, there's, there's lots and lots of things in there. And you could burn up a lot of staff time just administering, you know, a sixty thousand dollar project, a twenty, twenty thousand dollar project. I mean, whereas if you have one big thing that's really gonna.
If the, if the city had an economic development director, would they be able to pick up some of the urban renewal stuff to be able to sort of tie that into the work that they're doing?
They could. I don't, I mean, I guess I'm a different school of thought, even though we could use some administrative support. I don't think, I don't think it's a lack of staff that has not caused projects to go forward.
Right.
I think for a while, we didn't really have much value inside the boundaries, so we never were collecting very much money. I think we're set to roll. If we can get agreement from the city commissioner and the urban renewal agency on projects they want to go forward with, we're ready to get it done. So that's not an issue.
I was mostly referring to administrative staffing.
Someone to send out mailings.
I've done enough of my, belly aching about that for one night.
Yes, you have.
Clearly on that. She has administrative support. She can be a little more agile later than we can.
Right.
There's, there's obviously gonna be a lot of overlap, I would think there would be, between what the projects that are anticipated in the downtown district and the downtown renewal plan, you know.
The community plan?
The downtown community plan, yes. There's a tremendous, they're redundant.
How, how we do is, we have a thing called the capital improvement plan. It's a six-year plan. And we use urban renewal to basically leverage other funding sources, whether it be a federal grant, you know, a state grant, or, you know, sewer funds. I mean, you name it. We, wherever we can put urban renewal dollars with other dollars, that's how we, we, we like to try and leverage other dollars as much as we can.
And I worked on the downtown community plan. I didn't, wasn't the manager or anything, but I was part of it in terms of staff. So I'm cognizant of everything that's in that plan to a certain extent. And so I'm fully aware of the transportation improvements and some of the promenade things and the plaza areas and the streetscape. And so that, and then working with metro and the regional transportation plan, you make sure, you want to make sure you dovetail all these so that you can also try to get federal money and make it all come together. So we're trying very hard to make sure we're melding all of the plans and, and trying to get as, match our dollars as best we can.
And then the thing that's very striking to me as a volunteer person who has little knowledge, that this is quite huge, what the city actually has to do and what they actually have to keep track of and all the different funding sources that come into all of the various arenas and everything. I, I think that, you know, you know, it's so unjust that people malign the city because the scope of what the city actually does is very huge and.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate that.
I guess the main message, as far as urban renewal goes, is it's just a tremendous resource. And, you know, there's a reason why other communities around us are trying to create them. It's not so easy to create an urban renewal agency anymore. So it's, we're very lucky to have two.
Mm-hmm. And they're on their feet and starting to bring in some dollars that you can actually do things with.
If I could just add to that, we're very lucky here. When we were looking at mixed-use development throughout the metro region, most recently in the last three or four months, there seemed to be a real difference in the reports back from those cities in the region who have a functioning urban renewal agency and those who do not. Clearly, there's a different focus. It's a main tool. And one of the conclusions of that work was that urban renewal right now is one of a city's major tools for making its metro obligations come, come forth to fruition.
I'd just like to ask one last question that you just touched on. Why is it difficult now to set up a, a new urban renewal district?
I think, I mean, this is just kind of anecdotal. I don't have any hard facts to back it up. But it's just the climate that we're in right now. People are kind of looking at their tax statements and, you know, it looks like they're paying a lot of taxes. But really, if you look at what you're paying now in Oregon City, five oh five per thousand, not more than, not less than nine years ago, you were paying nearly ten dollars per assessed thousand. So really, the tax burden has really decreased. So, I, I mean, that's just my guess.
So you're just saying it's difficult from the standpoint of getting the citizens to buy into more taxes?
Yeah, I might mention, though, the city commission does have the authority to establish an urban renewal district by ordinance. Although I think a lot of city commissions feel like they're more comfortable with.
Voting.
With, with establishing that district if they've gotten a vote of the people. But by law, they do have the authority to do it by ordinance. They do not need to take it to the vote of the people. So.
So you're suggesting it's, it's the, the political climate, not the technical difficulty or the. So you're suggesting it's, it's the political climate, not the technical difficulty or the legal constraint?
Basically, what you do is you hire a consultant that's, you know, well-versed in, like we did. Well-versed in, in agency laws, and they go about setting up the public hearings and going through the process. You have the plan, and then you go. So it's not terribly difficult.
It's clear-cut law for the urban renewal.
I think Portland has fifteen or eighteen or twenty-five.
Well, you certainly see the benefits in, in Portland, I mean, it's just unbelievable.
Playing your square.
They would not be anywhere without that.
Well, and I think in Oregon City, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna look like I'm just so in love with this, but-
I am.
Since I do do the funding for all the capital improvement projects and for public works, I know what the money situation is, and we would not have done red soils, we would not be doing Amtrak, we would not have been doing downtown streetscape, we would not be doing two thirteen Beaver Creek if it wasn't for urban renewal revenues.
The Carnegie, the Carnegie.
There is no other funding source for those, STCs will not cover even close to doing a project like any of those.
Right.
So, and in terms of all your utility funds, they're not, they're not set up to cover those kinds of projects either.
We just completed, you know, the first part of the whole visioning process, which is asking for other additional improvements that would be made in the city in a specific, you know, visioning format and, you know, it's, you know, we have to be willing to do it if we want it. So, well, that's been very good, very, very good indeed.
So yes, and if you ever want any more information, don't hesitate to call me or Brian, we're here to help out.
These, so this kind of concludes a combination of the workshops, one and two, and that brings us to workshop number three, which is the Oregon City Civic Improvement Fund, and Brian Gosgrove, our assistant city manager, is apparently going to be-
Do you want to sit down here where you can mic, Brian?
Senator.
You know, I was prepared at that time.
These next two should be pretty quick. Civic Improvement Trust, I just gave you a list of basically the projects that have been funded from July of two thousand through current. What the Civic Improvement Trust, how it derives its revenue is from hotel motel tax. You need these back. And Civic Improvement Trust is a nonprofit, so if folks wanted to donate money to it, they could. So it's not just a collection of hotel motel taxes, it's also set up for donations if people want to donate money to it. And essentially, the whole goal of it is, is to fund projects and, and activities that are related to tourism, or that are related to increasing Oregon City's visibility within, within the region. So, and I'm not the most well-versed person on the Civic Improvement Trust, Mary Palmer, she's the staff person that handles it, but I can give you the basics, and then if you have more specific questions, I'd be glad to help.
Excuse me a minute, Brian, could you go back and tell me what the real name of this is?
It's the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, O C C I T. Is, is there a specific agenda I'm supposed to be working on? Maybe that would help.
No, well, there's this, there's this question sheet that I made.
Okay.
Is that what you made?
There you go, thank you. How was this created and why? Okay, it was, it was created when the state legislature said, local governments, you can go ahead and create these, these creatures. And most cities throughout the state have something of this nature. If we had more hotel motels in Oregon City, we would have more money coming into this fund. It's really not a significant amount of cash flow for the city, it's roughly seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year that's brought in to this fund. And the Civic Improvement Trust is basically made up of the five city commissioners and four citizens at large, appointed at large. And they meet, they're supposed to meet quarterly, but again, it's all a cash flow thing. So they advertise that grants are available to the various folks in the community that are, they're usually applying for these grants. And they meet and determine which projects basically they wanna fund, and they fund them. So that's basically the-
What's the balance in the fund right now?
I think there's nothing in there right now. Because they were gonna call a meeting and they found out that they don't have any money, so they canceled the meeting, so. And it's, it's a cash accrual account, so, is when the money comes in, it's available. So that's why it's kind of a meet when, when we have money.
Just out of curiosity, we have what, one motel in town?
Well, we have Riverside, and we also do Beds and Breakfast, or how would, how would I pluralize that? Beds and breakfasts? I think there's three or four in the city.
Yeah, but there's no motel or hotel up here on Hilltop, which would be perfect, perfect, joined with Clarkness Community College. I mean, we could bring in so much business from the city and from the college with the lecture halls.
So this, all this dough is just basically out of the Bed and Breakfast and one hotel?
And one, one hotel, Riverside. So you could see, if we added like a two hundred room hotel, just so you know, there is some discussion about, on the Stimson property and that whole area in there, of doing some redevelopment and putting a hotel down there. I've heard that just through the grapevine from some of the property owners down there, so that may or may not happen.
The, what's the criteria for awarding these grants? Because I know they just had a grant round, and there were lots of different projects that were part of that grant round before they spent all the money.
What is the criteria?
Yeah.
Things that basically increase the visibility of Oregon City. They've given money in the past on several occasions to the Oregon City High School girls' basketball team so that they could do some of their travels. They've awarded all kinds of small grants for a variety of things. I mean, if you wanted specific ones, you can just take a look at this list here. They've, they awarded money to run the trolley operations during the tourist season last year, because the, the trolley is kind of bleeding the parking fund dry right now, so. They've given them for summer concerts, just a variety of, of things like that, smaller.
The girls' basketball team travel expenses, huh?
Yeah, they've given money to have them hold their first tournament, yeah, I mean, it's, if you think about that team, it's really an asset of this community, because it gets such high visibility, so.
I've seen previous lists where they spend money to draw people to come here, like there was a colored business society or something.
Yeah.
On one list I saw, it kind of stuck out.
Yeah.
As, as is that really the best hotel motel tax?
Well, that's the reason why you have a nine-member commission or a committee that goes through that.
Yeah.
And really, you know, there's no hard and fast set rule on how you can spend that money.
Is there an application deadline and a form, is that kind of thing?
There is, there's a real simple, there's a real simple form that you have to fill out, it's like, I think, a one-pager. You submit that to Mary Palmer, and I think the deadlines are, are spelled out, I don't have a copy of the ordinance right now, but it's basically two weeks before the committee meets. And if you want more information on the actual formal application process, I would just have Maggie get the information from Mary and, and either mail it to all of you or to whoever's interested in that.
This is like once a year or a couple times a year?
Well, they're supposed to meet four times a year, but like I said, it's based on a cash accrual.
Do they, do they ultimately answer the city commission as well, or do they get-
The city commission is, five of nine members is the city commission.
Are, do you have any ideas, just as with your position in the city, of, of a focus for this money? And especially if there were a more money coming in, but-
Well, I can, I can tell you what most cities do with their, with these proceeds. Most cities earmark probably anywhere from thirty to sixty percent, depending. And they send that directly to their chambers of commerce. And that's basically how they fund their chambers of commerce. We used to do that in the city until there was a, I don't know if there was some falling out between the business community and the commission or what, I mean, I can't speak to that, but there was some issues between the two groups and it just didn't happen anymore. So we're not sending money to the chamber.
So if we wanted to hire, if the city wanted to hire somebody, maybe you had mentioned earlier something about a economic development person, point person, that would seem like that would fit right into something like this far as funding. And the money comes from the hotel motel tax, and we spend it to create more hotel motel tax, I guess, you know, just build it up.
Yeah. If, if there were significant revenue coming in from this, that would be a logical thing to look at.
Okay, but from a planning perspective, you know, it, it seems very clear that it would be in our best interest, economic development-wise, to try and address that and get a little bit more hotel or motel action in the city, because the revenue would be there to do much more with, if we, if we had that, and we do have a need for it in our community.
You know, I, I can't speak to why, I don't know the locational analysis that goes into whether someone comes into a community. And, you know, if you hired an economic development director, they wouldn't necessarily have that expertise either. They might be able to go out and, you know, ask folks, would you consider locating in Oregon City? But basically, it's like this New Hagens that was built over here, they did a very extensive, expensive market analysis of Oregon City to determine whether or not they would locate here. And I don't know what decisions they based their decision on, I don't know what factors they based their decision on. But it's a very, if you're gonna invest that type of money in a community, you go through a very lengthy process.
Another question, though, is can you, could you expand the tax to generate more money as a tool for, you know, civic betterment?
The city, the, yeah, they could increase the hotel motel tax, but that's, again, that's a political thing. They did increase it, I believe, about four years ago.
Okay, and they could do that again, right?
They could, but, you know, you're basically talking about one hotel. And that's a significant hit on their revenue, so, you know, they have to weigh that as well, so.
Well, the county has a six percent tax.
That's what ours is, and it was at four, I believe, and they increased it by two percent.
So you have an additional two percent on top of the six?
No, it was at four percent, and then I think four or five years ago, they increased it to six percent.
The county?
The city.
The city.
So it's a total of twelve percent?
No.
Oh.
That's the total percent of the hotel, it was at four, and then they increased it two percent to six percent.
For the city, for the city, but then the county also has-
Oh, I don't think the county can tax, well, I guess they can, they do. Actually, they do do that, and that's how they fund their tourism development commission.
So it would be a total of twelve percent.
It's a double whammy. So that's another reason not to do that.
But the county uses their money, Jared.
Fund the Tourism Development Council.
Right, and they award grants on an annual basis to basically anyone who wants to apply, you have to meet certain criteria.
It's focused primarily on tourism, so if it's a tourism attraction or a tourism promotion project or a tourism development project, those are going to be likely to receive funding. It's a competitive yearly-
Annual process, true. They've funded things like the Malala Buckaroo rodeo and the bomber over here on McLaughlin, they've given money to all kinds of things.
So if the county's a six percent and the city's is four, that's a total of-
No, the city's a six, city is six, no, currently, it's six.
Six percent.
City is at six and the county is at six.
So that puts, that puts the city at a disadvantage regionally, because I think more than the county's total is nine percent. And Sandy has a one percent hotel tax, and many of the other cities in Clarkness County have an additional down to six.
Right.
So you are putting your hotel at a disadvantage.
Right.
But how many people look at the hotel tax and decide, I'm not gonna stay there because I have a higher, I mean, how many people even ask?
Nobody, yeah.
Nobody.
I, I guess I could read from the budget sheet here on kind of what they're supposed to be doing. Acquisition of improvements to parks and open space, senior center facilities and activities, library improvements, recreational facilities, increasing the significance of the historical heritage of the city, environmental improvements and cultural activities like lectures, concerts, art shows, and educational series. So that's a pretty broad kind of canopy that they can fund projects under. But it's really not a significant source of funding for the city.
Nope.
Although I'm sure that when, couple of these little projects, maybe, you know, fifteen hundred bucks or two thousand dollars makes all the difference.
It does, every little bit helps, I don't wanna, you know, underscore that.
Okay, then that leads us to our fourth kind of workshop here, is if you have other questions, be sure to let me know, I'll try to get you additional information. But we are now to the Metro Enhancement Fund as another tool, development tool that the city has.
Okay, I'm just gonna go from your sheet here. How was this created and why? It was created so that Metro could put a transfer facility in at the corner of two thirteen and Beaver Creek, or Washington Street. And that was basically one of the selling points that they offered to the city and to the three others that are in existence right now, two in Portland and one in Forest Grove. Basically says, we know there's a lot of community opposition to this facility, so what we're gonna do is give you basically a fifty cent per ton tipping fee that you can use. You'll, we'll set up an intergovernmental agreement, and you'll tell us how you're gonna spend that money each year, and anything you decide is basically fine with us. So that created the Metro Enhancement Fund. I don't wanna bore you here, but this, the Metro Enhancement Fund and the Metro Enhancement Boundary has went through so many iterations. It started off as a very small area around the, basically around the transfer station itself. It was then expanded to take in Park Place. Most recently, it's basically, we did away with the boundary and it's, money can be expended anywhere within the city limits of Oregon City. So, and I just finished renegotiating that I G A, and it'll be on the city commission agenda at their next meeting.
And that, that seems reasonable, it should be a city one.
Yeah, I agree, and I know, you know, like I said, it's, that was a very political process that they went through. I mean, it took literally, I think, fifteen, sixteen months to get an agreement. So, and that was back in, I think in the early or the late eighties, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, somewhere in that timeframe.
What kind of dollars are we talking about?
Pretty significant, actually, two hundred and some thousand a year, two hundred and ten. Forty of that goes into the general fund, it's called the tax offset portion. And basically what that means is, if there were a private building there or something, you would tax that property. And they just agreed upon a certain amount, a certain land use classification, basically, and said, okay, here, city, this is what you would have received had there been a, a private facility there.
Yeah, blue and pink.
Exactly, thank you, that's the term I was looking for. And then, and the rest of the revenue that comes in is what we generate from the tipping fee. And that goes directly into the Enhancement Fund, and that, this, this fund has been inactive. It's been accruing significant, significant amounts of, of revenue to the tune of about three-quarters of a million dollars. And I'm hoping to get the city commission to, to bless the idea of funding a comprehensive plan with that money, because I can't think of a better use of trying to improve everything inside your city limits than having a good, a really good comprehensive plan. I, I think I get some indications that the city commission may be willing to do that, because there's no other source of revenue. We couldn't ask the general fund, it's basically a general fund project. The general fund has no revenue, looking at a deficit in eighteen months if we, when we staff a third fire station, so. The rest of the revenue is, is basically awarded on a grant basis.
It's gonna cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to-
No, 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 a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, and what kind, how would you access, you know, getting a grant to have that fund or something? What would be your criteria?
Well, I, actually, I, as part of the I G A process, I went through and basically redid the way the, the committee membership is set up, redid the criteria for receiving a grant, and basically redid the whole process. And I can send you a packet, basically, that has all the grant criteria and how, when the committee meets and when they award the grants and all that. Basically, I'm recommending to the city commission that they meet once a year, sometime in March, April, and just roll that into the budget process. In other words, whatever projects that they fund, they would then just by resolution, adopt those projects, and then they would be rolled into the budget, so it'd be done on an annual basis. So then it would be my job to get out into the community and say, hey, grants are available, here's the deadline, you know, get your applications back to me in the Metro Enhancement Committee, which is, again, made up of the five city commissioners and four citizens at large. The old Metro Enhancement Committee had a makeup of one planning commissioner, one city commissioner, three people from the Park Place Neighborhood Association, and two citizens at large. We've just done away with that, because basically what that committee did was just give recommendations to the city commission. So it created all this extra paperwork, and sometimes the commission wouldn't agree with the Enhancement Committee, so it set up this kind of, this, this problem between, you know, basically an advisory committee and a city commission. So the thought was, let's just, let's just have the city commission, since they ultimately have to bless whatever money is spent from this fund, get with four citizens and just make the decision right then and there, and then we'll adopt the projects by resolution. Any other questions about Metro Enhancement?
Doesn't seem like, even though seven hundred and fifty K at this point is a, you know, not a bad little egg, it's not enough to really do big projects in terms of capital construction or the kinds of things that urban renewal could do.
Right.
But it does seem to me to be the kind of fund that you would want- But it does seem to me to be the kind of fund that you would want to do things like develop a comprehensive planner, support that kind of sort of mesoscale project where you need to put some dollars into the thinking and planning, whether it's comprehensive or it's a project driven, so that then you can do, use your bigger funds, actually, build the thing and get it in place. That's a, would be a clear sort of policy direction to go on that, but who knows about the commission? I mean, I don't know...
You're not asking me to comment, I know.
I don't know what the competing demands are, since I got to give use of that, for middle scale.
This year, if the, let's see, if the Metro Enhancement Fund, if it's agreed that, that it should go into comprehensive planning, there are several other grants that the city's scratching for right now, where this becomes a leverage fund for, for others. So there's a potential, I think we figured it the other day, of increasing the planning monies available in this next fiscal year of five, fifty thousand, out of having that piece of money approved if, if the city commission decides to do that. So that's, that's another significant way that this fund is large enough to be a, a match for those kinds of things, and I think even for some project money down the road. I mean, certainly, but, but then, this is new, is it not?
What's new?
Well, the way we're going, you're proposing...
The process is new. But the, the focus of the funding has, has always been kind of, the, the loose language is that the money should be spent on projects and programs that, that enhance the area within the boundary. So that should always be the focus, and that's actually language taken right out of the intergovernmental agreement with Metro. So, I mean, the, the projects that have been funded sometimes have kind of, you know, it's been tough to kind of sometimes make that connection in some, but for the most part, they really have. I mean, the, the sign at the, where the transfer station is, the Oregon City sign, that was Metro Enhancement. There was one year where they gave seventy thousand dollars to the Interpretive Center for their operations. Seventeenth Street slide repair, I don't know if any of you remember the flood where Seventeenth Street slid into Abernathy Creek. That was funded through Metro Enhancement and then subsequently reimbursed through FEMA. So, and the Peace Garden restoration was Metro Enhancement. All the tree planting activity in the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association has been funded by Metro Enhancement. So my hope is that the commission will, when they look at the criteria, will fund things like neighborhood recycling programs, things that have a direct connection to the facility itself. At least earmark certain portions of that for neighborhood associations to do recycling programs, composting programs, things of that nature.
Okay, wow, well, we've...
Are you sufficiently overwhelmed?
Yeah, got a dead education.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Derek.
Welcome.
Appreciate that, in one hour.
I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, too. Believe me. Once a week?
Okay, so I guess we'd be ready to move along to staff communications to the commission.
I'd direct you back to your packet and to the memo at the back, trying to remind you that, that when you're looking at your packet, the oftentimes duplex, that is print on both sides of the paper, and so sometimes you think there's a missing page, but it isn't. Anyway, just to remind you that, or if you have any questions about the sample motions that I included, my recommendation is that you pull these out of your packet and put them in your notebook or wherever it is, and, and maybe get conversant with the, the rather formal jargon that, that is involved in making these motions, but they are complete. And I read them again, I thought, boy, you know, those are the, those, that's the dog language. So that's sort of in our playing, training motion. And the second one is that, yes, we do now have our revision of our hearing procedure, adding the final staff comments part as number, item J, and we have those printed out. And also on the back of that, although you probably, this is actually front and back, the two pages are one, in our handouts, you notice that we put the, where the city municipal code is online now, as an address at the bottom, and for more information to conduct the staff so that people understand, while every chance we can, to advertise where you can get information is a good idea. The final one, the final thing, of course, is the Code of Conduct, which we've already done. There's one personnel change that I'd like to make note of. This will be Carrie's, our, Carrie Foley, our recording secretary's last night, and she is moving on to some full-time work. And in her place, we are moving towards having a recording secretary named Tom McLaughlin, only, I think you say it, McLaugh...
It's McLaughlin.
McLaughlin.
With an A, actually.
M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N, instead of O-U. So Tom is our recording secretary in training. Carrie tells me that he will be able to serve our, both the HRB and the Planning Commission very well, so we're welcoming him and wishing Carrie the very best as she transitions out into a different focus. And, and we appreciated her very good work.
Yeah, Carrie's done a very good job, and we appreciate it very much.
So I believe those are all my announcements and comments.
Okay, so which commissioners might have some comments this evening?
I'd like to suggest that the Code of Conduct be put on the webpage as well, under the Planning Commission section.
Oh, that's a nice idea. Yeah, jobs, oh, and, and one other thing about that, I think we're trying to do away with this logo.
What's wrong with it?
Don't ask me that question.
To be replaced with.
Well, we have another, Mr. Nakamura came up with another logo that's a little more inclusive of our history, as opposed to just focusing on one aspect of our history. Was that politically correct?
Oh, that was very good. I'm astounded. Stunning statement there.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. Some of you got a message from me, an email message, that I sent, and others of you wouldn't have gotten one had I, you know, mailed your email, or you had one, or I also looked for a fax number. And that is that, as you know, and you may have read in the Oregonian, that the discussion has come up again in the city of Milwaukee about the future of light rail on the South Corridor as an option. And it just struck me that, I've always felt that in the ballot measure that was defeated in the mid-nineties, that the option of having Oregon City as a terminus of a light rail system, somewhere along the line, I missed the decision as to why it should be the Clackamas Town Center and not Oregon City. And it struck me, if this whole issue is being revisited, and if the discussion is being brought back again from the local level to TriMet and to Metro, I would really encourage this commission to get involved in that discussion and to make it known that we want to be a part of the discussion. And I would encourage the, us then, to talk about it and recommend likewise our city commission be involved in that. And that's not to prejudge which way the discussion ends up, kind of what position the city would take on light rail, but I think in terms of future planning and infrastructure for this region, these chances only come around once every so often. And if it's going to be talked about again, I don't, I would really regret having a decision made that, once again, the Clackamas Town Center is just automatically going to be the terminus of the system.
Well, the amazing thing about that is that the shopping center is more important than the, you know, college educational facility.
So I think there are a lot, exactly, there are a lot of opportunities that if, that we are proactive about voicing our concerns and, and the direction we would like that debate to take, I think it, in turn, would shape the direction of debate tapes. So I would, I don't know where on our agenda we want to talk about this or when, but I want to just bring that up for discussion.
I'm not sure where this came from. I think it was passed out at one of our last meetings, South Corridor Study. I don't know if you've got a copy of that.
I did.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if I've looked at it fully. It seemed like it was not...
Because after I got your, your, your email, I went back and read this again.
Oh, yeah, huh?
Yeah, and, and it looks like they keep referring back to the studies and the surveys they've done, where there just isn't the citizen's support for it consistently. South of Milwaukee or south of Clackamas, there's been very little support for light rail. And it looks like that's why they're, I think that's kind of what they're basing their decision on, so it seems like that's where the effort needs to be, maybe, is getting people on board to support that. But I understand what you're saying. By the time we do that, the opportunity may be lost.
It, it would never be inappropriate for the Planning Commission to make its views known and to invite, I think, the South Corridor Study people to a Planning Commission work, work session due, and ask those more difficult questions. And I would, I would recommend that if, if you're interested in pursuing this, then we can pursue having, you know, presentation and some roundtable discussion.
To me, it certainly goes with vision, excuse me.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I agree with Maggie, because I believe that Metro went ahead with their airport run from Gateway against popular public opinion. They said they were going to, they found the money, and they did, and it was against the public's opinion. So for us to go, well, maybe the public doesn't really agree with us, you know, let's not bring it up, I think, that's like glossing over something that we really should look at.
I, I also think honestly that, and Duff, I hear you, that, you know, I think that if there is a, that one of the functions that this commission could, could serve is to provide, add the opportunity for the public, especially at this end of the county, to learn more about light rail. I mean, that's been six years ago that that was on the ballot, and there's been a lot of things happen. I think, you know, I wouldn't say it's a different ballgame now, but I think this commission could serve as a forum for information, education, helping to build maybe a different set of attitudes towards light rail now, then, then. And as I said, I'm not prejudging where we ought to come down on this, but I think it's a valuable topic that is a planning commission, and we really need to weigh in on.
I'd be interested in learning more about the process they went through.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is the Amtrak station taking some of the fire or wind out of the...
We'll see.
The light track, the light rail, because I don't know if this will work, but, you know, if I can get on, park my car down at the bottom of Oregon City and get off in Portland, I will.
Yes, yeah, I...
That would be a much quicker, faster, easier than light rail ever could.
Sure, well, I'm not, I'm not going to jump, I mean, I agree with you, but I'm not going to try to design it right now. I'm just interested in raising the issue.
That's going to be the only thing that I would see would hold it, hold the wind out of these things.
There's, there's a couple of things. One is my boss, John Rist, is in charge of guiding the South Corridor alternative study. The county commissioners have the busway option, which sets aside a dedicated lane, road, separate road for buses, and I believe that goes out to the town center. So there is some momentum already about which alternative is going to be recommended at the county level. Also, Artful Red referred to perhaps extending light rail down to Milwaukee, leaving it open the question of what would happen beyond that point. And some of the alternatives included enhanced bus service and busway and a couple of other options for areas beyond, which might provide more flexibility throughout the, the area and not just on any one alignment, whether it's the town center or Oregon City. So there is a lot to know about it. The other thing is that this issue is moving ahead now, and so if you want to be informed and have, provide meaningful input, it needs to be seen.
And I just have one comment about that. You know, the citizens sort of getting aligned that they're not, you know, not in favor of light rail, but my understanding of the, of a large portion of the citizen perspective is that, you know, we have so many road needs that are hugely pressing that aren't being addressed, that you've got to draw the line as to what's the priority. And the feeling seems to be is that until we get some of the pressing road issues addressed, you know, light rail is a, is a backseat.
It's really complicated, but light rail is funded from a different pot of federal money than roads, so it's not a competition for the dollars.
They could be going on at the same time. You're exactly right.
And they should be going on, because your road issues would be mitigated by metro issues, by light rail and by bus.
It's a perception, though, of not having all that information out there.
You know, transportation in the minds of most people is roads.
Yeah.
And I think when the people, like, six years ago, when that ballot measure was up, what they said no to was the money, because they were asking for a fairly large chunk of money to do something like that. And I think, you know, I think they, they gave it a shot, and everybody said no, and then people, and the first thing they think about now is still, six years later, what's it going to cost me? What's it going to cost me?
The...
Like Brian alluded to earlier, that's kind of the climate we're operating in right now.
The South Corridor Study is moving along, and the report that, the two reports that we've given the Planning Commission in the past on this have to do with the fact that this, this study has been set up by Metro not to study light rail, and that is to take all the alternatives that were not light rail oriented in the South Corridor area and take a look at it real closely. So we've had the workshops and so on and so forth in this area and elsewhere. However, you know, as people do, the public involvement process has brought the southeast Portland neighborhoods back to the discussion that they feel is most important, which is a light rail component. And so this is in the mix now, although it's not officially part of the South Corridor Study. And so at this point, that's, there are two things going on, really. It's a decision down the road by other folks, I guess, of whether a light rail alternative needs to be considered down the road in this study for a certain segment of the area. And then the second one is, well, what about just starting up the discussion of light rail from the point of Milwaukee to Oregon City, that, that particular segment? Is, is a legitimate planning question for the future that can be discussed. So I can see you being a participant in two different ways. I guess the short, short, hopefully, this is taking way too long. The short thing is, if you would like me to bring you some information or schedule something for either work session or your next meeting, I'll be glad to try to do that so that you can get started on the discussion, if that's of interest to you.
I think, I think it's important to all of us commissioners, if I may speak for my fellow commissioners, that we want to be at the table if we have the opportunity to be at the table.
Okay. All right, we will proceed accordingly.
Okay, so I, I would like to change the subject off to something, I'm sure that Maggie won't want to go there. And it's just a question. I know that we have rules, the way the rules are the rules, but we've been seeing, you know, so much of stuff being demolished and torn down and trees cut, cut down and so on and so forth with the, you know, the rights that the property owner has to do that on their property, but being done prior to any kind of application coming to the planning department. And I've been really, just mulling that one over at length, because it seems wrong. And we're seeing stuff be destroyed, old trees be destroyed, ground being leveled. We don't know if historic buildings are being torn down. I mean, we have no information. People are just coming in, getting an application, doing demolition, and there's, there's, there's no, no restraints that I can see on being imposed, and I, I just don't feel that that's in the best interest of the city. And I'd like to know if... And I'd like to know if there's something that we should do about that, is there anything we can do about that? It seems to me that no demolition should be allowed to transpire until, you know, they have an approved application. And that's just my thinking on it, I haven't discussed it. I had a little bit of discussion with Commissioner Orson about it, but she's kind of feeling likewise.
I think if a building is designated a historic building, it has some protections, but otherwise...
And then I sold property in the past where they wanted to tear down a garage that was obviously falling down and had no historical significance, and they had to go through the hearing process to, to get that approved, because the house itself was...
Historic.
It was in, yeah, it was in the McLaughlin, just correctly on there, and an old tin garage obviously wasn't here when the house was built, and we had to go through all the steps to do this. I know, I know there's some...
But I believe there's a whole set of engineering guidelines that you have to go through in order to get something to bring in and tear down Michael's house, it was on Warner Millie's, what I'm assuming that we're thinking about. There's a whole set of engineering guidelines that has to be met before anyone can come in and tear those down. And I want to put it on the table that I'm against micro-managing individual property owners to the point where nobody wants to live here. If you say that you can't cut down a tree, what's your definition of a tree? We get into that dialogue again.
Okay, but then we're coming, okay, but look at this a little bit...
But there's, we don't want to, as a city, as far as I know, do over what's already, we need to make sure that we're not micro-managing and telling the engineers and the property owners and the tree cutters what they can do minute by minute.
Okay, but let's look at it from a different perspective. For example, on a planned unit development, they're going to come in with a development plan, and their plan is subject to review, and part of the review process is how are they going to utilize their trees, their natural landscaping, their wetlands, whatever features happen to be on that piece of property is part of the process of their plan.
If they take the trees and mitigate the wetland, they've already made several large engineering decisions that they've had to go through, and if there's nothing to base a planned unit development on, they cannot do a planned unit development.
Okay, but the same thing in my, in my mind, you know, applies equally, even though in a small lot size, it's still, you know, the same, we're losing, you know, we're losing assets of the community before we know what their intention is.
Yeah, this is a classic problem. I mean, look at, over on Otter Crest, over by Buport, you know, you had twenty acres clerked out right in the middle of Buport Corridor because it was the guy's property and he was going to develop it for housing. Well, it's still sitting there four or five years later, brush drawn, and, you know, any number of small sites, you know, in cities that people demolish. I'd be curious to know, maybe there's, are ways that other jurisdictions have tackled this issue that might provide some guidance here. I tend to agree with Commissioner Surratt that, you know, at some level, we can't micromanage individual parcels without an overriding public reason. And what you're saying is one of the overriding public reasons is the value of trees, vegetation, a natural landscape that's built with sensitively as opposed to obliterated and start it over. And I guess, how, where's the balance there? And it's a classic clash here.
I'd like to see that we have all of the information in place before we go through with this, all the engineering information, the arborist reports on those trees, if they were infected, you know, diseased, we don't want to keep them. I happen to know the people that were renting one of those houses, and you didn't want to keep that house, guaranteed. You know, I mean, if you don't have all the facts and documentation and information, it's hard for me to say, okay, let's go with this idea. I want to stick to my part, because it scares me and it scares the rest of the citizens, not just the fact that we're losing a tree and complaining of a tree, and we have them. That's what our tree ordinance was about.
The tree ordinance is beginning to, just about passed, and so then there's a tree committee and a ways to go, and I think that some of the classic issues that are discussed right here in this, kind of, what did we say in the vision, or in the Code of Conduct, vigorous, or in the Code of Conduct, vigorous debate, lively and vigorous debate, will be, will continue to be the real classic questions. In the meantime, I would be probably very useful to you to have a set of the, the actual rules or regulations that govern both demolition and tree cutting in the city right now. So, we'll try to pull that together and at least have it as a starting point for further discussion.
I mean, to me, it just seems like it's putting the cart before the horse, it seems like you would want to not do that until you...
When I was working in Creve County, in the planning department back in the early seventies, we had a guy, this guy came in, had about twenty acres. First he brought in the bulldozer and, well, first he brought in a landscaping company, basically pulled up all the huckleberries and all the sword ferns and everything else, sold those as landscape material. Then he brought in a bulldozer, bladed off all the topsoil, sold that as topsoil, and then he brought in, you know, then he bladed stair step pads or double wide on what was then a bare sandstone rock, it looked like a, it looked like a mine, a strip mine. And when people bought those lots, then they had to go buy loads of topsoil and...
And ferns.
And trees and, right. There wasn't a thing we could do about it, it was, it was awful. And eventually then the county did, because of that horror story, adopt some guidelines for that kind of pre-development site activities. On an individual lot like this where they're going to, I don't know what's planned there.
It's a large lot, I mean, it's not a little, we're not talking about a, you know, ten thousand square feet.
Is there a particular site you're reacting to?
Right across the street.
Yeah, the Warner Millie site, that one, I...
The one with wood and trees and stuff.
I did, I did, the thing that bothers me about that one right now is that when I checked it out, that, oh, Lord, I'm going to have to estimate and remember in my head what I think the equivalent of the trees that were cut or down, so when the development comes in, we can say, you displaced approximately twenty trees or whatever, and so you would have to be there.
Well, they're huge trees, they were just little trees.
Well, they were medium sized, and then there were some older ones, and Commissioner Surratt is correct. Do we know if they were diseased, it didn't look like it from what I could see without trespassing on the property, but they could have been. So, you know, it sort of even gets complicated, it's just eyeballing a site and then trying to assume some things about the site.
Well, I think, you know, Bob's example of what he saw, you know, that guy out on the Malala River, wherever, that started redoing the whole, you know, river shore there on his property for, you know, campgrounds or something, and then you had Mr. Waddles out there on the Willamette, you know, redoing the whole shore of the Willamette because it's his property, he can do what he wants. Well, you know, it seems like some kind of, you know, reasonable guidelines would be appropriate, and I don't know what they are, but there it is.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, but that's a, that's a starting point to find out what the guidelines are right now.
What the city is, you know, assuming people do and what we regulate and what we don't, yes. And we'll be glad to put that together as a starting point.
I drove by and...
Who was there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything they do there is going to be an improvement, as far as the structures that were there, but I do agree with the trees, it's too bad to lose the trees.
Well, you know, quality of life, everyone in Oregon City values quality of life, and what is quality of life, and that's one of those quality of life issues, it's one of those nebulous things, it's hard to get a hold of it and everything, but, you know, it's, it's there, it exists, so...
Well, that may not be the worst thing, too, I mean, that may be good to catch it now, sort of think about it, because probably a lot less would come in the door at some point.
So, we will be back here, I guess, on Wednesday, is that correct, for our scheduled work session, and I think Maggie has put on the agenda that we will be looking at Malala Avenue's street amenities guidelines and charrettes for the Glen Oak sub-area, and review the Planning Commission mission statement.
Which is at the back of your, on the back of your agenda for Wednesday.
This was year 2000, do we have, we have a new goals and objectives? No, we're still operating on this one, right?
This is your latest one.
That's why we're reviewing it. Hi, yes, okay.
I have a quick question. What, when we did the transportation system plan, there was, there was some heated discussion about the lighting that went road by the, by the new high school. Where has that gone from there? Are we still having conversations? Because at that point, we decided we were going to continue to try to work things out and talk about it, and I'd like to know if there's going to be an update maybe on...
Well, actually, the, the school district in the city agreed on a sort of bare bones, not so much an alignment, but a way to proceed in talking about transportation for that area. So, they both signed the paper, and so the city commission passed the TSB with the stipulation that that intergovernmental agreement is where, would be added to the plan.
Not the intergovernmental agreement with the high school and the city, but not the college?
Not the college, that's correct. So, the dashed line is out there, and that will be part of our discussion on Wednesday.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourned in tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
There you go. You used that gavel twice, didn't you?